I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will have Heather note the roll call and if I can get a motion to excuse Commissioner Milton, please.
I move to excuse Commissioner Milton.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries. Move on into the approval of minutes for the commission meeting held on July 20th, 2016. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of July 20th, 2016.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this point in time, item number five, this is the time citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on a non-agenda item can do so at this time. Are there any speaker cards?
No.
Anybody from the audience? Okay. Item number six, disclosure of ex parte communication.
None.
No old business, so we will move right into new business. We will open public hearing. Use permit to allow the development of daycare center, and Alex will present that to us. Hi, Alex.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an interesting setup today. So, this first item is a request for a special use permit for the learning experience daycare. The property is located on the northwest corner of North Litchfield Road and Avalon Drive. Across the street is the Goodyear Community Park and the fire station. The property is currently zoned commercial office under the Palm Valley Phase Two PAD. The zoning ordinance allows for daycare uses in any zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. The use permit review process evaluates the traffic and parking patterns to ensure that the appropriate uses of the appropriate use of the site. During the review, the traffic report was submitted, reviewed, and approved by engineering. Since the daycare will care for younger children, it is a requirement for parents to drop off or to walk their children into the facility. So a drop off and pickup lane will not be needed. And the parking is shared with the church. The hours of operation differ from each other, so parking is, the parking was accepted with the review. The building is supposed to be ninety-eight fifty square feet, and the playground is seventy-five hundred. We have included some conceptual elevations. The next step of, if you do recommend approval to council, and if council does approve, would be to submit site plan and design review. So these are conceptual in nature. So the site is located within the neighborhoods category as defined by the general plan, and the addition of a new daycare facility would be an appropriate use for the site and the area. Hours of operation, as noted in the staff report, are from 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. All public notification requirements were satisfied. We did have a citizen review meeting held on July 27th. Staff and the applicant were available, however, no residents showed up. And we haven't received any phone calls or inquiries regarding the project. Therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. The applicant is available for questions, and I can answer any if I can.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question regarding the conversation the church and the property had in regards to the parking. Just, was that something they? Look, how did the conversation look in regards to, you can use it during this time, we are going to have some after hour things going on?
I believe a parking agreement was agreed upon. The applicant is here, and if he has anything to add to that, I'm not sure exactly what the conversation looked like, but there was a parking agreement that was put in place.
Before we get to the applicant, any other questions for staff? Applicant is here, would you like to address the commission or answer that particular question? If you can come forward, just so we can get you on record, name and address. You can sit right there next to Alex.
Okay.
A little different setup, but.
Bill Crowley, Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Not sure how much of our address you need. Is that good? Okay. The church had an agreement in place prior to us even purchasing the property that shared parking was going to be required.
Got it.
So, we all kind of knew going in that we were going to share parking, and it worked out to be that because most of the business for the preschools on weekdays, and the weekends are more reserved for the church, that it was a good balance for both properties to use each parking location.
What did, in the parking agreement, is that good for a certain amount of time, or is it good for the length of the lease, or length of the time you own the building? I'm just, regards to the parking, we've had issues in the past with parking in churches, and I'm just wanting to understand this, this idea of a parking agreement.
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact wording is what it says in our, in our contract, but the understanding, I think, is that all three pieces of property now, the church, the property we've purchased, and the one that's currently for sale on the west side, all share parking together.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And Commissioner Kish, if I could just add too, there is, it's, what, the type of agreement is, it's a shared parking access, so it's almost like an easement. So it actually runs through the land, and there would have to be some act, you know, action to remove that easement, to remove, you know, with all property owners approving that. So it is pretty much a forever thing that access is allowed. Very similar to, you know, the Target parking lot, there's not, you know, some isn't for Michaels, some isn't for Target. They have shared access, that whoever's doing busier gets the parking space.
Perfect. That's an excellent example. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Anything else from the applicant?
Unless you need it.
I think we're good at this time. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing, and I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number 16-350-00003.
Second.
Is it three? I'm sorry, I have five on my, okay. It has been motion by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Kish. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item two, and I will open the hearing on the special use permit to allow the installation of a wireless communication facility. And Alex will present, this is Commissioner Barnes's favorite.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. The next item is a sixty-five foot, sixty-five foot mono palm cell tower located in the Palm Valley Medical Plaza parking lot, just on the southwest corner of 136th Drive and McDowell Road. A landscape island within the parking lot, and one, one parking space will be utilized to hold the equipment and the cell tower. The parking that is provided onsite currently is the amount of parking required for the site. So the applicant was required to replace that parking space on the lot. So if we look at the site plan, let me zoom in a little bit. An additional parking space was added onsite to satisfy that, those parking requirements. As we've been through this process several times before, special use permits are required for cell towers that are not amendments or do not co-locate over fifteen feet above the existing tower. All criteria in the zoning ordinance have been met, and setbacks have been satisfied. An alternative citizen review was held for this project, so there was no meeting, but notifications were released to the adjacent property owners in advance. We did get one phone call from a resident in Palm Valley. He was concerned about the location and the, the location adjacent to the hospital. I did let him know that all of the city's requirements were satisfied, and that we actually received a letter from Abrazo West Campus or the hospital in support of the cell tower location. We actually also did hear from our fire and PD staff that a, that additional services were needed in the hospital for emergency purposes. So for all of those reasons, staff is recommending approval, subject to stipulations, and the applicant is here as well to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for Alex? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Would the applicant like to speak? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will take a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve 163500002.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Please note in the record, the one dissenting aye.
Please note, I was not the resident that called.
Onto agenda item point three, I will open a public hearing. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow loading delivery on roll-up dock doors to the front on a public industrial zoning district, general industrial zoning district. And it says Karen, but obviously Karen is not joining us today, so Katie?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Karen was sick today, so I'm filling in for her, so I apologize for that. This is a staff-initiated amendment to the zoning ordinance to modify the provisions for loading, delivery, and dock doors that are found on an industrial-type building. We've done this in conjunction with our economic development staff, and we actually, Harry Paxton from our economic development staff is here tonight too. So if you have questions of their, from their perspective, he's available for any of your questions as well. But we've been hearing from our industrial property owners and the businesses looking in Goodyear that it was time to look at these, you know, these regulations and amend them. Currently, no door can face a public street. That's what the regulation, regulation says. So if you're familiar with the Michael Lewis Building, which is right next to this one, they have doors, but they aren't facing 143rd Avenue. And if they had wanted to have a door facing 143rd Avenue, it just, there was no way to allow it. They would have had to have done some kind of PED rezoning process to create special regulations just for them to allow something like that. So what we wanted to do is try and strike a balance. We think we do have good regulations that keep a nice level of architecture, but we do want to allow some more flexibility and modernize our standards a little bit. So what we're proposing is to allow these, these loading doors to face a public street as long as the public street is not an arterial street, so it couldn't face Yuma Road, Bullard Avenue, those kind of major streets. As long as there's no adjacent residential, so we don't want those loading doors facing residences where maybe it could be noisy and, you know, a visual blight. The doors would, can only occupy a maximum of fifty percent of the building. So the other half of the building has to be, you know, office or industrial, so only fifty percent of the elevation can be devoted to doors. However, if it's on a corner street, that can be increased to seventy-five percent, because when you're on a corner street, obviously, you have more challenges of orienting the building when you have two streets that you're trying to work with. Finally, when you do do doors that are facing a public street, you still have to screen them from public view with a two-foot berm and a six-foot wall. They could do an eight-foot wall if they want. And then at least two rows of trees would need to be planted on the street for an edge. So staff's opinion is that by writing this in is it will decrease the need for PED rezonings or to try and react to individual businesses that we're trying to attract here into the city, but set our regulations up so that few businesses that we're seeking can be successful and find a location in the city that works for their building needs. We did advertise this proposed amendment. We did an eighth of a page display ad. And we also did the standard legal notice in the legal notice section, and we posted it on the city website. And we haven't received any inquiries at all on it. So, you know, it is a staff-initiated text amendment, so we do recommend approval. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions, discuss it further with anyone.
Does anybody have any questions for Katie? Yes, Commissioner Walters?
Thank you for that, Katie. You mentioned that this, there's a desire to modernize this, these provisions. Could you provide more context on that? Are there other similar cities and towns that have done this? What is it you're thinking of when you say modernize?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Walters, that's a great question. We, you know, if you look at our current industrial standards, you can just tell that they were written in a different time. I think we allow typewriter repair businesses, and you can just tell it's an old-fashioned ordinance. And for the most part, it doesn't harm things too much, but, you know, buildings are getting bigger. You know, what happens, you know, some of these really advanced distribution centers have very different needs than, you know, what was an industrial in the past. So I think it was last year we increased the height in our industrial districts. Now we're finding that there's more needs for these loader, loading and delivery docks, because even manufacturing processes do more transportation than they did in the past. So it probably needs a whole update, and some other cities have had time to do that. Right now, we're just kind of hitting issues as they come up, and hopefully we can take some time to look at them more comprehensively. But, but that's kind of, you know, and Harry, I don't know if you have anything to add to that question, but I, I, I think it's just that the nature of business has changed so much, you know, since, you know, even twenty years ago, and our regulations need to catch up.
That's great context. Thank you for that.
And Mr. Commissioner, if I can add to that for a second dovetail on it. The, as Katie illustrated or pointed out, the nature of that whole industry has changed, you know, that business segment has changed. And many of the projects which Harry and his team and Michelle Laurie worked real hard to attracting to the city has some distribution or warehousing component to it, but also includes regional office, which is very desirable for their, for the city. So a roll-up door context could automatically, I'm going to say, throw us out of contention for very impactful projects because of this roll-up door context, when really it may be a small component of an overall project that is incredibly desirable because of regional office associated with it. So we, the roll-up doors is, that regulation is very well-intended, and it's, it's served the city well. We're just, as Katie illustrated, modernizing it to reflect sort of that changing market dynamic, if that makes sense.
And Katie, do we have a plan to, you made it seem that some of those other ordinances are a little outdated. And are we going to just, when we get the time, look at them? And I guess maybe also to you, Harry, should we move a little quicker on this? Should there be a task force that really digs into those, and so that we're not missing an opportunity to do something?
Thank you, Chairman. That's a great question. We are working in our, to our work plan, I hope within the next year that we could maybe add some zoning districts. Like, we don't have a flex industrial zoning district that kind of centers like the one we're in that kind of allow both commercial and maybe some light industrial-type uses. So right now, those kind of developers wanting to build those projects have to do a PED. So that's one district that we've identified. If we could have that, these projects could be developed quickly without having to go through a rezoning process. We have had discussions with economic development. We want to look at the Bullard Avenue corridor specifically. If there's some type of zoning, we want to do maybe an overlay zoning just for the Bullard Avenue corridor, because the, the goals we want to achieve on Bullard Avenue may be different than what we want to achieve up in the 303 corridor. You know, like on the mix of distribution centers and stuff. So that is definitely on Harry's list. We don't have a definite timeline on when we're going to achieve some of those things. But, please jump in, Harry, if you have more.
Thank you for bringing that up. And you're probably very aware, the council for a long time has thought of the Bullard corridor leading down to the airport, from the freeway down to the airport, as a corridor more designed for campus-style development, or office development, manufacturing development, and not necessarily distribution development. And so we've all been very conscious of that, and that's one of the things that we've been tasked with in economic development, is to work with the planning and development to understand how we can ensure that that happens over time and provide different mechanisms to allow the development that we want to come fast. And so we're evaluating different, a different proposal to, different proposals to look at that as to how we can, can encourage the right kind of development there. So that's certainly an important project for us, one I know we'll be working very closely on.
I do want to ask if you don't mind, because I heard you say if you're having a task force work, work on that. Were you implying that maybe a task force of commission members could work closely with staff on some, and help us vet some of these? I mean, that might be something.
That, that is absolutely, I want to figure, I don't want to give myself work.
You're volunteering your fellow commissioners for?
Yes, all these other commissioners would love to work with. In all seriousness, though, I, I think that whatever we can do in our role to speed that up, and, and I, I never like to come into these things and just dump more work on staff, because I know your, your plates are full, but whatever we can do to help, or, or you need direction from us to get outside help, because I'm sure that somewhere in this massive metropolitan area, somebody's dealt with a Bullard.
Right.
So why, why spend time reinventing the wheel when we can just go find that wheel, bring it over here and make it look better for us, or however we need to do it? And if that helps you to spend a little time with you guys in our roles before you get to these meetings, I'd be happy to do things like that. But anything that, I just want to make sure that we stay up with our ordinances, and we don't miss an opportunity here in the city.
I appreciate that. That's a great suggestion.
Katie, maybe there's an opportunity to work with economic development to even prioritize, you know? If you're seeing certain trends coming to the fore, and there are particular areas that you do need assistance in, we could tee those up and work them in priority based on what we see, are there trends in economic development seeing, or inquiries from our, from developers, et cetera, or whatever we want to go after, so we can work at it in a prioritized way, because I'm sure there's a lot. And I'm more than willing to volunteer my time, so I'm on record.
No, no, it's a great suggestion, so we can work closely with you. So when we're, we're coming to you here, we know a lot of the issues and have a lot of it worked out already. Thank you.
You know, the thought crossed my mind briefly. I'm a prioritized kind of gal, you know, as you could see. Let's start with square one.
The Goodyear master plan is a good place to start, and even that's quite dizzying in some way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any other questions for staff? And I, do we have any speakers cards? No. With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will take a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve case number 162200001.
I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Maloney for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Katie. Agenda item number nine, staff communication.
Thank you, Chairman, and this is, thank you for being patient as we set you up differently. As we mentioned last meeting, and I had in the cover memo, we are going to do kind of a work session of sorts. It's, it's basically an informal discussion. So I'm going to ask, Steve and Alex are here, so just give us a second while we drop this off.
And Mr. Chairman, while Steve and Alex are, excuse me, coming up to, to join you, let me kind of set this in context if I can for you. Back in the spring, Katie and I were visiting and setting out some work plan, goals and objectives type priorities for what we wanted to achieve as a department in the next couple of months and a year or so. And during the course of our conversation, it came up that, you know, the planning staff really does a whole lot of work. And I know you all realize that, and I know the council does as well. And a lot of it is reviewing cases and, and doing site plan reviews and kind of review work, and really not necessarily engaging the creative side of their bodies. Because as planners, and I happen to be one of us, we, one of them, we're all creative, solutions-oriented people that want to make lasting impactful differences to the communities where we live and work. And so the idea was spawned, if you will, that let's go on a day and a half, two-day retreat to really get some crea, because there's a lot of opportunity in Goodyear, as you all know. You know, the fourteenth or sixteenth fastest-growing city in the, in the country, and we're only ten percent developed. So there's all kinds of opportunity to really make a meaningful impact here. And so why, there's lots of opportunity, so let's harness the creative talent of our staff. You know, we're real, the city is really blessed, and I'm blessed to work with these creative people who are intelligent, very capable, and just need to have the opportunity to express that. So anyway, we, we went on a year, excuse me, a year and a half retreat, a day and a half retreat, and kind of identified, well, we did identify two projects. One is West Goodyear, which you'll have tonight, the discussion tonight. And the other project, which you'll have next month, was the sort of city center Bullard Wash. And so we broke the planning staff into two teams. Steve and Alex took West Goodyear, and Karen and Joe Schmitz took the city center Bullard Wash type area. And so they did a fantastic job, and you'll see some really creative solutions that really can have an impactful meaning for the future of the city. Of course, this is just the, the, the idea stage, and our charge is to advance this in collaboration with developers in West Goodyear, because there's some, sixteen of them, if I remember correctly. So it's, and many of them already have entitlements and, and pretty much engineering approval. So it's about how we can achieve this vision in collaboration with our partner, private sector partners. So it's really a, it's an exciting opportunity, and, you know, I'm pleased to be able to, to see the fruit of their effort. They did a great job. And also, by the way, we presented this to the council, was that last month? But it was in June, wasn't it? Yeah. So we presented this to council in work session around the table, just like this. And council was very, very receptive and very, very supportive of the ideas that was generated as a result of our work session, and we hope to get your input as well to make it even better moving forward. So with that, Katie?
Thank you. And just to give you some context too, we're not presenting something formal. When we set out on a retreat, we didn't think, oh, we're going to make these things, and they're going to be presented to council and commission. It was after we did it, we said, hey, let's, you know, we should share this. So this is exactly what we created at our retreat, so that's why it's a little different. It's handwritten. So I appreciate you being patient with us as we, you know, try something different. And we, we're not looking for, you know, specific recommendations from you, a green light. We just want to start a dialogue. You know, we, we chose two areas that we realized had a lot going on, and so we just wanted to start to talk to both you and council about them, and get them on our mind, and think creatively. Now, this one came to mind, and it was interesting, because at first we started thinking we wanted to focus on the I-10 and 303. And then it kind of, as Alex and Steve started looking at it, it was like, no, we really want to focus on more the residential side. And what I want to point out what's different about this area is, especially here in Goodyear, we're so used to working with large master plan communities. And I think a lot of newer areas are used to doing that. And so we're used to these large master plan communities. And so we're used to these large master plan communities that plan all the infrastructure, plan the community. You know, Newland is a great example where they might try a different product and, oh, it didn't work exactly as we want, so we're going to quickly adjust. And, you know, we're hearing our residents need this new amenity, so we're going to build it. You know, they're out there working for the community and adjusting. These developers in West Goodyear have worked together really well to solve some of the regional infrastructure issues and how they're going to tackle it. But as planners, when we hear from commission and council in our community, you know, we want to see places like Verado, like Cooley Station, like Agratopia, you know, we're trying to think, well, how do we get that cool stuff? And we're realizing that, you know, the city might have a different role to play than maybe cities did in the past in being more proactive to attract these things, just like economic development is proactive in attracting businesses, maybe planning needs to take a new role and start to think, well, how do we make, how do we make things cool? And I'm starting to step on the toes of Steve and Alex, so I'm going to go ahead and let them take it from here.
Thanks, Katie. Two mics.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, like Katie said, this is informal, so stop us, comment at any time. But I will start with just an overview, kind of where we're at, the area we're looking at. And again, like Christopher and Katie said, we looked at this area that is west of Cotton Lane. We initially were looking at all this area up here, but then we were like, let's focus here. And so what we have is a three oh three, we have Perryville and basically I-ten Van Buren down to Broadway. So that was kind of the area we looked at. And as you can see, there are names written on this map. Those are a lot of the developments that you've seen come through, the ones Christopher mentioned. Pretty much they're all on paper right now, except for Las Briesas, that you've seen that one probably coming through homes down there, but most of these are just paper entitlements right now. And what you can see here, though, is pretty much a diverse area in terms of what it could be ultimately, but what we have is Citrus Road, Perryville, and Cotton is our kind of our north-south, Yuma, Lower Buckeye, east-west. And in going out there, we kind of drove the area, and what I'd like to do is just kind of take you on basically a tour down Citrus Road, and that'll kind of give you kind of a sense of what we saw. And I know you're familiar with this area, but we're just going to take you down. This first slide, that's the canal. So we're kind of at the northern area. And here, we're about, maybe we're going a half mile down. You can see the area is pretty rural. We have a lot of county islands, a lot of county development. That was something that we looked at as these county developments, these folks here, they're not going to go anywhere. So this is, this is what our area is going to look like, and that's where.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
We're going north.
We're going south.
Sorry, yeah, south.
So this is pretty much past Yuma Road, we're heading down south. Again, you can see that kind of rural character to the area, a lot of, there's animals back there, and, oh, this is the terminus here, this is at Broadway Road. And again, you can see, this base map shows you a lot of development on paper, but, you know, as we can see, driving up and down Citrus Road, there isn't much out there yet. So Alex and I and our team, all of us, we kind of looked at this and said, well, what do we have out there? There's a lot of agriculture still, a lot of county folks out there that are enjoying their way of life. We have developers coming in that are basically about 7,000 single-family lots on paper right now. And we're like, you know, that's a lot of lots that could be, maybe, if you envision, maybe just a continuation of canyon trails heading west. That's fine. What we as planners like to do, though, is look and see, you know, we look at places, we study places, what makes a place, you know, what makes a good place? So we're like, all right, let's look at this area. And what we found was, let's use what's out there as our inspiration. So let's go with the existing county development out there, the agricultural theme. Let's see what we can do in terms of influencing that. And so what we decided to do was, let's focus on Citrus Road. And we picked Citrus Road because Perryville, we share with Buckeye. Cotton is going to be something totally different, high-intensity, high-density, a lot of traffic. We said Citrus Road, we're pretty much bounded by I-ten, a lot of low-density, a lot of state use up here. We're not going to get much traffic. And pretty much south, it's not going to go much further. So we have a chance here to do something very unique and different, and that's where I turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Steve. All right. So I just want to put in my little buzzword because Steve said place so many times, but we are placemakers, and we want to make West Goodyear a awesome place to be, to live, to visit. And so when originally, the property owners who own all of these West Goodyear properties purchased these areas of land 10-plus years ago, I believe, and so those were obviously different times, and as I came to Goodyear and I was learning all of this stuff and looking at the PAs and all the design criteria that was already out there, I feel really loud. I was, it was interesting because it was, like Steve said, kind of a continuation of canyon trails down the line, which, like Steve said, that's, that's fine, but another thing, when, as we were driving through, Steve had mentioned that there were some county island properties who would come out and kind of protest and put their input and ask why we're doing so much to the areas around their land. And, I mean, that's development, so there's not much we can do there, but how can we as planners, other than just completely opposing the developers, put our input in and help make the county residents happy and successful and still enjoy their land? And so I'm, I hope all of you have heard now, the biggest, or one of the biggest trends is in agrahood, where we incorporate gardening and rural land into a more urban environment. And that's kind of our vision here with West Goodyear. And then one of the original, or initial things that I want to kind of place out there is to theme West Goodyear and come up with a new name other than West Goodyear. You know, we have Estrella that's kind of tucked away, and as Katie mentioned, it is a single developer. And so Newland has Estrella, Palm Valley was done with Suncor. And so as the city, we can be, we want to try to be ourselves the master developer in the area and kind of just influence those developments as much as we can. We might not get all of them, but hopefully we can kind of persuade some people and plant some seeds.
Got it.
What you did there, I see what you did there.
Got it.
And create a, create a unique place where our developers and the property owners can be successful, the residents can be successful in the area, and the city can overall be successful. So we threw around some, a few different names. The name that we did present to council was The Arbers. We also came up with WeGo, just to kind of do the little West Goodyear WeGo. That's been played around with a lot. So in this scenario, I guess we can just continue calling it The Arbers, and probably keep calling it West Goodyear. I'm sorry, it's just hard to change. You like WeGo?
I like WeGo, actually.
I, it's grown on me. At first, I was a little skeptical, but it's good, I think it's good. So one of the things we talked about was, since these all already do have the names like La Privada, Las Palmas, Las Briesas, eventually to get Las Palmas at The Arbers or Las Palmas at WeGo, or, you know, kind of unify that whole area to create that, that theme. So as a city, we do have, we are responsible for Citrus Road, that's in our CIP. So one of the things we talked about was theming Citrus Road and maybe doing like a monument sign that does state kind of the West Goodyear themed name. Either WeGo as like an arbor or a, what is it, like a little trellis over the, a little overpass as kind of the main entrance points to, from the north side and on the south side. And then, since those are really expensive, we did a little bit of research, but some maybe smaller symbols to represent that you've arrived in West Goodyear. And so I guess I should scroll through some of these. So this is an example at Agratopia. Agratopia, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to get out there. I've been a few times in the past couple of months, and I'm ready to bring it to Goodyear, bring the concept at least. So they have a lot of commercial, or they're built around this giant farm, and they're commercial, they have two different restaurants, they do have the farmer's market weekly, and it's centered around that. So most of the West Goodyear properties do have commercial zoning along Citrus Road. So if we can help theme Citrus Road and help get those developers to maintain that commercial zoning, then we can ultimately, hopefully, utilize that commercial zoning for small business restaurants, like local farms, some maybe like food truck lots, and just kind of do unique things like that. We also do have the Maricopa Trail, it's that green line that runs through. So we have a lot of value added there and trying to liven that up and make it agricultural-themed. And then, as Steve mentioned, we do have the canal that goes through, it's kind of a, also welcome to West Goodyear. So we had a lot of fun just brainstorming all of these ideas and what we can use. And so how do we achieve this, is the next question I hope you all are ready to ask. We, so charrettes are a big thing. I don't know if anyone's been involved in any in the past with any other big projects, but we're hoping, and Katie and I have, and all of this team have kind of started brainstorming a charrette that should be hopefully coming soon, where we can meet with developers, ask them, how can we help you? Because we did just update all of the development agreements, and those came through council, so you probably haven't heard too much about them. So all of West Goodyear had a bunch of development agreements, and we've been working really closely with all the developers out there. So we can partner with them and say, you know, we want them to be successful, but they're having a hard time selling their land because it's, you know, it's in West Goodyear, there's not a lot going on out there. So how do we get them excited, get them re-excited, because I assume they were excited when they first bought the land, but how do we get them excited to develop and to use these unique themes in their existing entitled lands? And so charrette would really put them in a room with us, and we can say, well, what can we do to help you be successful? And whether it be, traffic signals is a big one. Our traffic signals are really expensive, and so maybe working with engineering to do a cheaper option in West Goodyear, or maybe utilizing some roundabouts in some areas. And so how can we really compromise and make them financially successful where they're excited to do unique products and not change everything to the standard 50-foot-wide lots? And it's not necessarily changing all of these acre, or all of these lands to, or properties to acre-sized lots. It's, it's, I mean, Agratopia is very small lots and unique products on those lots. So it's a lot of collaboration between each entity and stakeholder on how we can make it work and make it successful. I think I talked a lot, really fast.
I've never been to Agratopia. Has everyone, I, tell me more about it. Where is it?
Oh, yeah. Agratopia is in Gilbert. It's, I don't know the, it's tucked in by, what is the?
It's near Santan Mall, if you know where Santan Mall is, like at the curve of the two oh two.
Okay.
But.
It kind of reminds me of like South Mountain, you know, the farm at South Mountain.
I do have a ton of other examples, but Agratopia was the first example that popped up on the screen, so I'm going to scroll through some of these other pictures because I just got ahead of myself. So in this picture, we have chickens. Chickens are not allowed in the zoning ordinance right now. So with overlays and with working on the charrettes, is chicken something we can allow as an overlay district or a new district where people living out there, even in a smaller house, can have chickens? And that would even help, I know we do, hopefully someday can annex those county islands that are out there. And so that would give them the flexibility to have chickens and have their existing land as it is without having to comply with our strict code. So yes, the farm at South Mountain was an excellent example. I had just went there earlier this year, and it's awesome, and they're doing great things. So we're.
It's a great event venue, you know, for businesses, and it brings a lot of different people from outside of the area to the area, which is always a good thing. And so there's a lot of multi-use there besides the farm itself, and then the eateries, et cetera.
Yeah, so I think this is Agratopia, too. Oops, sorry. This is also Agratopia.
So it's residential mixed literally with farming?
It was, I think, a couple of families wanted to do farming, and then they started developing the houses on land. There's a lot of history to it, if you want to look into it.
It's an old farm headquarters.
Okay. Got it, and they just added new homes?
Not that I advocate, you know, spending time outside of Goodyear, of course, but a great day trip is to go to Agratopia, eat at, eat at Joe's Farm Fresh Grill, and then drive out to Queen Creek and go to the Olive Mill and Schnep Farm.
Yep, I've been there.
Because Agratopia is on the way out there. Great day. You know, once it's nicer, I can give you more. It's a, it's a great little day trip with your family.
I've been to Schnep Farms, and I always wondered, how could we get, and then there's a smaller farm in Glendale, I don't remember what that, Talk My Child Farms, yeah.
I don't know how you say it.
And we love going pumpkin picking, going to all that stuff, so I always wondered.
We did, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the flight pattern and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Used to have one right up the road.
So is that something that you would think of putting, something like that right here? And how do we, I guess that's the question, how do you bring a farm that would be interested in coming out to Goodyear? Have there been farms at, like Duncan Family Farms, that want to bring back that kind of old feel?
Well, I, I think that a lot of it was the planning of the city and the planners of saving that place as is. I mean, I don't think it was the farmer that said, you know, you're going to keep my house and all this stuff and whatever. So I, I think it's a wonderful idea, they seem to be very popular nowadays. I think this is not a bad area to be in. I like that you're focusing on that because it is kind of a niche area because of the block and all of that. If you wanted to move forward on the Agratopia-type situation, don't just constrain it to here because I think you have a wonderful facility just south of 85 there, Rayner's facility, that I think is all owned by Suncor, Sun Somebody. Anyway, what I'm saying is, that headcor, that farm headquarters that you're looking for exists today. So, and it has two giant blue silos out there, it's, you can see it, you know, it exists. So I'm not saying, don't focus on building it there, but you already have something that is in city limits now, that if you could get there soon enough, and I don't know what all, Ron Rayner runs that place, but there is a farm headquarters that would fit this nicely at some point down the road.
Yeah, and we got excited about this, you know, the urban agriculture, new agriculture concept for this area. But I think what we were really, like, if I had to summarize it, what we're really trying to get into is, as planners, what often happens is, a developer comes in with a set of plans, it's already engineered.
Right.
And then we're really focusing on, what does the house look like? Where we want to, you know, we were just talking the other day, we want to start looking at the whole package. Because a lot of times we start arguing over details, how far is the setback, is it five feet or seven feet, you know, is there enough stone on this? When, when we visit these places that we hear from all of you that are really cool and great destinations, it's the whole thing. It's how they've laid out the parks, it's the right-of-way, it's having front porches, it's, you know, it, it's everything. So, you know, that's why we started, you know, how do we start to influence that? How do we start partnering, partnering with the development community in a new way to get that kind of stuff? Because, you know, where West Goodyear is right now, it's far enough out that we don't have cool developers knocking down our door, or I shouldn't say developers. don't have cool developers knocking down our door, or I shouldn't say developers, cool home builders knocking down our door, saying, we wanna build the next Agratopia here. So we're trying to say, well, how do we, how do we get proactive and let them know, hey, we we wanna be your partner and and let's get some cool stuff done? So that's where, you know, we'd love your ideas on that, you know, how do we start doing it? And then we also wanna, again, hopefully have the charrette and maybe we'll get tasks out of it of, you know, updating ordinances, creating incentive programs. We're not sure what.
What's a charrette? I've never heard this term before.
It's a um.
It's a torture device.
I'm sure Randy knows them very well.
That they make you do in school.
Yeah, it it actually comes from more the architecture side of things. Um it's French for the cart, because in the olden days, I guess, architecture students were working on their drawings at the last minute in the cart to take them to the studio. Is that how you? But it's a, it's an intensive, typically about a week, where you, you know, you wanna design a project and so you just kind of get everybody in the room together and just get it done. You know, like, let's meet, get the designers to work, come back, does this look good? Adjust, come back, we're done.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's brainstorming and collaborating.
That's so cool.
You know, one of the things that I brought up during the uh plan, the twenty twenty-five plan, was um I went to, I spent a couple of weeks in Bend, Oregon. And they went into a part of Bend that was not doing so well economically and they were having problems with kids in neighborhoods and stuff like that. And they built a park and it was a um truck, you know, food trucks. And they created in a a structure like that. And then all the trucks, you know, could come in park and they'd have a place for people to sit, to drink beer, to buy wine. They had a place for the kids to play and they had all these fabulous trucks. And I mean, this wasn't terrible food, this was really good food. And all of a sudden, before you knew it, you know, everybody was going, well, let's go to the truck stop. And I'm like, what's the truck stop? And it was, and it was so much fun. You get to meet all these kinds of people from all over the, you know, the area and you were eating out, you could bring the kids, you know, no dress codes. And I mean, it was just top of the line. And how they made the fences, they put all the, and I've seen it here now, is they put all these boulders like in wire containers and that's the wall. That's it. I mean, it was very rustic and and just terrific. I mean, it was just a great concept.
So that's about a four mile stretch? Am I looking at it right? So what made you um wanna do it in a linear fashion? What was your thought process behind that?
Basically, the constraints, we were kind of forced into it with north-south. Um can't go further west and we're pretty much constrained by the three oh three here, freeway here and really a freeway to the south. We basically have three freeways kind of forcing us into this kind of rectangle pattern here. Uh a lot of development already here. Again, we're not going north, we can't go west, so it's kind of, this is what, this was the area we decided to focus on.
I mean, you know, the the theme, so your themed area encompasses kind of this whole big triangle. And I'm just, you know, the color stands out, you know, we've, you've got a strip running down the front, which is like the strip, mini strips. I'm just wondering, um is there a way to make it a district or or a nexus or a series of neck, what's the, what's mini nexus, nexai? Um I'm just shredding out loud here.
So you're saying like a district in the middle, like a circular?
Yeah, if it was a, if it was a district, I mean, linear is nice, because you can continue and you can stroll when the weather's nice down, but but a nexus or a district can be nice too, because there's just, it's easier to to move back and forth. You can create something, I mean, I could see an opportunity for public-private space start to interact, you know, like my favorite example is the park with an ice cream store. You know, when you go to the park and your kids want an ice cream and then you gotta cross the arterial street of death to get over to the, get where you can get an ice cream. But if you can mix those two, like Prescott is my favorite example, the old courthouse square.
Get it, I totally get it.
Tiny streets, because you know, that's where we go in the summer. Yeah, we don't go to the bar, but we do go to the candy and ice cream store.
There's a beer garden theme coming, I can see it now, beer garden, you know?
They have a meatery nearby now.
A meatery would be good.
But you know, I think there's just a, you know, if we can be an activist planning department and commission, then there's an opportunity to create, you know, Peter Calforb kind of.
That's great, yeah. And I think what we are, cause again, we started with the, okay, we're the city, what can we influence? We can influence right-of-way. And here's a big ol' right-of-way. That's, I think, where we started and I think you're taking it a step further of, how do we get that, make sure we're promoting these things and?
You can create a whole concept and say, all right, we wanna do this, who's interested in built, coming down here and and getting involved in building it? Here's our overall master plan. We're the master planners, we're not waiting for you to be the master planner. Which I don't know if any cities really do that. You guys are more in tune with the rest of the country than I am, but.
I think it'd be somewhat new to the valley. I'm sure, you know, Christopher, working in the private sector and in a different part of the country, probably has something unique to add.
Yeah, it's not un- not unheard of, not, it is um a progressive thing, but I think Goodyear is a progressive city. Um and the time is ripe, because it is primarily, as Steve and Alex pointed out, undeveloped at this point, but does have entitlements. So while we may not end up with a developer doing agritopia, agratopia, excuse me, we can influence, as Katie was mentioning, the right-of-ways and the theming, which goes back to what Alex was talking about earlier, the branding, the definition, I mean, do we wanna just be West Goodyear and like, oh, you're, well, you're that much closer to Los Angeles or?
Make it a different destination.
Or make it a neighborhood, um an area of the city, like Alex pointed out, like Australia or Pebble Creek or Palm Valley, as opposed to just, you know, uh three thousand acres, that's sixteen individual neighborhoods. So it's about, and one thing that's important, and I thought you guys had some slides maybe on this, is some of the ideas and concepts also come, came out of what's built out there in addition to just what's existing, cause Las Briesas has a lot of these same thematic elements already built out there, split white rail fences with arbors and things growing up them. So it's about also building on what's there from a development standpoint already. And it do, it will take, as Alex pointed out, we will hopefully be successful with um all or most of the West Goodyear developers. Um we have to be real sensitive, cause they already have their entitlements, so we can't go change their lots and things of that nature. But you know, there are things that we can work with them on. As Steve pointed out earlier, there's, what'd you say, Steve, six thousand, seven thousand residential lots out there that are pretty much all in the same market segment? So it would not be surprising to us to see requests come through as the market evolves to change their development plans, to respond to new market realities. And when they come through with that regard, then with that request, there's an opportunity for us to partner um in a more progressive way to say, hey, well, can you, can you do some of this, West Goodyear branding and things of that nature? So it's, I don't want anybody to walk out of here thinking that, well, we're gonna force this down the West Goodyear's throat, because frankly, we can't do that. But we can partner with them and we can influence the right-of-way a lot and to to really bring, build an identity or a neighborhood segment of the city. So I hope that makes sense.
And um to build off of that, I think what's really exciting and definitely where we need all of your help too, you know, and this is just the start of this discussion, you know? But we are, to do something really cool, we're gonna have to get more creative and innovative, because cities' funding abilities, legislative authorities have been changing and changing and changing. So to get something done, you know, we can't just say, oh, sure, we have some money, we'll just go ahead and build this thing and, you know, we'll just legislate them all and, you know, change it, you know, we just don't have some of the tools that maybe some of the other communities in the valley had when they were developing and stuff. And I think that's something you all can bring a lot to on, you know, sometimes us as government, we're just like, oh, that'll never work, you know, we've tried that, you know? And I think you guys can all bring some creative ideas, especially with, you know, the agriculture and the architect- texture and the, you know, business side and, you know, how can we work with the schools in creative ways? And um, you know, we already worked with Desert Edge a lot, you know, how can, you know, how how can we build them sites that bring in this urban agriculture stuff or whatever or just neighborhood connections? You know, I I think there's a lot of creativity that can come from all of you um in in coming up with ideas. And and we definitely wanna have open discussions with home builders and developers of like, what do you guys need? What could the city offer to you as an incentive? That's something we have the ability, you know, the, I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but the example I keep throwing out is, you know, on Citrus, I don't know if you're familiar, like on Central Avenue, there's the Murphy's Bridle Trail. It would be a lot cheaper for them to build something like that than an eight-foot sidewalk. You know, could we throw out to them, hey, what if we got rid of the eight-foot concrete sidewalk and you did more of this bridle trail? And you take that money and help us build these arbors? Would that work? You know what I mean? Just actually starting to try and think creatively and negotiate, like, could, could we work something creative like that to make this look cooler?
You would think that they would love that.
Yeah.
Because it's such a great concept. You know, instead of the.
Well, also, there's so many farms that would, I'm sure, partner, I don't know how it works. I I'm, I didn't grow up on any farms. I grew up in Vermont, there's lots of farms there, but a lot of local farms that would want to utilize space and how could we make that attractive to them in a residential area? How could we allow them to use this space and then share it with the residential? Um I don't know how that works. How did agricope, Agratopia do that in terms of having residents and farms living so close to each other and? How did that happen? I guess that's.
I mean, I think part of it is, cause it was the concept from the beginning. I mean, when they laid it out, they said, this is gonna be an area that's gonna be the farm. And as you're saying, it sounds like it was some plant, I mean, it was a historic farm site.
Yeah, it was a headquarters, it might have been the Morrison family.
Which we kind of like that concept, there's this uh existing county island, so why fight it? Let's embrace it and say, hey, just like we wanna embrace Luke Air Force Base and embrace these things about our community. So there's a potential. And we're hearing, you know, already by talking about this, we've heard things like CrossFit Fury, which is on Bullard. Um they're they're building or have built Fury Farm. They're very interested in this urban ag and stuff with their business. Um CTCI is farming currently. So there's even, again, farming is, you know, we talked about how an industrial is changing, farming is changing and businesses are getting interested in this. So there could be opportunities.
Absolutely, that's, that's definitely a connection too, of bringing people in, you know, what they call factory farming. You know, we have the corridor, you know, that's a whole nother industry and a whole nother discussion on factory farming and and how to do that. And it can be powered by solar, go figure. You know, precision agriculture, you're looking for, you know, organics, you know, and organic is big. You know, if you talk to a lot of the food producers, what do they say? We don't have the materials, the organic materials to make enough food, the demand is just outrageous. You know, if Goodyear wants to be known on the map, start attracting the millennials and and even companies, industry, pick that theme. You know, we have the farms here, that that history. So you have that beautiful, I wanna live here, but I also can work here. You know, I can be, you know, old town quaint, but I can also be on the cutting edge of precision agriculture and actually feeding the world, um truly. You know, I think of, you know, wine industry, you know, you you go to all the food and beverage things and so forth. You know, grapes, the government was giving grants, actually, um to Arizona, because there are, they have some good areas for grapes. Well, if you control through factory farming, the um climate, you can grow anything, you know, truly. So it's it's interesting to look at that. If you're looking to take the residential and people wanna live here with the business aspect, you may be able to get the public-private partnerships going as well and then even build out our um, you know, corridors, you know, and kind of blend it all together. But you know, does Goodyear wanna develop into that kind of, what are we known for? And it's wellness, right? We already have cancer treatment centers, cancer treatment center doing the thing, CrossFit Fury, it's what? Wellness, it's, you know, it's eating clean, you know? Maybe there's a theme there, you know? And young families, you know, they want organics for their kids. They wanna be knowing what they're eating, they don't want, you know?
Eating clean, I like that. That's a good, that's a good phrase.
Eating clean.
You just don't wanna say, come to Goodyear and get cleaned out, right?
Get cleaned out. Yeah, seriously.
That's Panera's new theme now, is eating clean.
Is it? Okay.
But um Panera is actually one of the biggest um chains that have, you know, eating clean, putting, you know, taking all pesticide stuff out of their, you know, food sources and so forth and so on. I mean, they corporately may want to do something, you know, whether, you know, the farming aspect. So with every little, what I call smaller organic farming, there could be what I call more industrial, factory-type farming, you know?
Hasn't Duncan gone totally co- um organic?
I don't know if they're one hundred percent organic or not.
Blue Sky too. Blue Sky.
Yeah, Blue Sky's good, yeah.
I I read a, you know, if if the population of the world hits like nine billion by twenty fifty, twenty fifty's not that far away, you know? The demand to supply enough food is just, you know, daunting task, you know? Goodyear on the map, we've got the climate, we've got agriculture, you know, it could be a nice way to.
And I think you're um really getting somewhere with, you know, again, with just doing the general plan update.
Right, exactly.
We are, you're right, we're, we are an active community. I think that's what, we're a very active, sports, activity, cycling-oriented community.
Absolutely.
And it it really builds off of that and that that starts to create our.
I I read the.
Our identity as Goodyear as a whole.
There was, I guess, sort of comments on the council for canal type thing or what I, we call them river walks, you know? You know, just to be able to create that, you know, walk path, jog path, ride path, you know, along the way that brings you, you know, and connects you to even the rest of Goodyear, you know?
Do we need to bring Midwest kind of look to Goodyear?
Bring the we- bring the West?
Right.
Yeah.
With like farming and.
Yeah.
Local um shops and more niche shops versus kind of, you know, the big ones like.
Big bastards, yes.
We're good with, we got enough Walmarts, we got enough Targets, we got enough.
How about another Walgreens? Or a nail salon?
It'd be cool to see more mom-and-pop shops, it'd be cool to see more um, yeah, like bring something like Prescott to Goodyear.
Do you see more pictures? I do, yeah, I'm sorry.
I like that.
Love it, yeah.
So yeah. Absolutely. Where was this, Steve, do you remember?
Is that at Straya Mountain, one of the designs up at Straya Mountain?
I don't think so.
With more porches.
Yeah, porches, um. Do you remember this anywhere? Oh, this is in Texas somewhere. Um and then something kind of unique that when when we were talking about this, PV three oh three um came in with their sign package and they had water towers? They had a water tower as one of their signs? And so.
Yes.
And it was just like, wow, like, this is so fitting or along this corridor area and maybe we can try to work with them to move that sign closer to Citrus.
Alex, I appreciate all this information. I think these pictures are great and it's definitely got, I think, all of our wheels turning. But the pictures I liked the best were the first ones of Goodyear and the inspiration that you drew from Goodyear as it is, because you're not chasing down a trend from somewhere else and trying to force it. It's actually something that arises and is part of our personality already. So I I like that a lot. I think if you approach the current stakeholders, landowners, entitlement holders, whatever you're calling them, in the way that you approached us, I don't think you can go wrong, because the way you framed it, um it was all just very fluid and it made it, made a lot of sense. I don't think it's a tough sell. I mean, I'm already picturing you guys living there. It's how, um, the, I I feel the the belief that you have in it come across, so. And then you may be able to draw even better ideas from the developers themselves, because they may, this may be a breath of fresh air for them, saying, we would need someone to help us connect the dots. That's really what you're trying to do. So I I really think it's a great initiative.
Yeah, it definitely can allow them to be creative if they haven't been part of this type of um development and truly be a trend set. development and truly be a trend setting, you know, for other parts of, you know, the area or the country if they, you know, are interested in those kinds of things. It's like, yeah, we did it, you know?
Beargrounds, I think of, ag clubs that the schools can get be a part of. There's going to be a new school. They're going to build a new school. They probably will have an ag agricultural center, an ag department to work with that.
Yeah, this seems like a community that could serve all kinds of demographics, all kinds of ages. You think Pumpkin Patches and kids and that's great. I've spent plenty of time in Pumpkin Patches myself with my own children. But also think of my mother and, you know, as people want to drive less and walk more. There's a lot of different constituents that could be served by a Wego or arbors. The arbors, I kind of think more of tree farm, but I, I'm, I'm sure that as you continue working on this, that the right fit will come.
You, this place has a lot of history in Arizona in general and it is kind of an eyesore now, but it could be iconic right there is that trotting park. And it's, it's in transition now. I mean, I know it's full of asbestos, but you never know what can happen with the technologies we have nowadays. I mean, they still let you into the Colosseum and it's, it's got the same problems that maybe you turn that eyesore into an icon. I mean, it, it's got a lot of history and anybody from Arizona for a long time knows its history and knows where it's at.
Even the community college curriculums, you know, if you start dealing with the organics and start dealing with even wine or, you know, there's whole curriculums around that that, you know, kids can get into good paying jobs and stay within their community and, and grow a family and be part of, you know, education, jobs, family, stay, live, work, play.
All of them, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Steve, you did...
Yeah, that's...
Steve did this last...
That's awesome. Isn't that lovely?
Yep.
Well, that, I think that's a front yard, so it's, do regulations allow your front yard to convert?
Yeah, but look at the, look at the place, that development, not far from here that has the horses. You know, they've got stables in their backyards.
Backyards, right.
Is that what it is? I forget. And I thought, oh my God, that's really wild.
So, yeah, these are just some examples, but I do appreciate you saying that. What we do have is valuable. And one of the other unique things is like Citrus Road used to be full of citrus farms. So we're hoping with, with Public Works is to get some of those citrus trees back onto Citrus to revitalize that theme.
They use water, but they're, could be strategically placed.
A lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
Oh, and so, yeah, and this one, we wanted to kind of bring the, the traffic signal to light because as I mentioned, a lot of developers are a little concerned about the cost of the traffic signal. And so, not necessarily an ugly traffic signal, but different, different, what am I saying? Different equipment and pieces can still be fit with a theme and be more cost-effective and...
Yeah, our traffic signal is $600,000 about right now for the entire intersection.
For a traffic line?
For a traffic signal. And that's the developers, I mean, so just think, again, you cut that cost in half and we have 300,000, or even if they devoted half of that, you know?
Don't they have them where they just string them across and they hang them?
That's at Sereville until someone hits the hole.
Four-way stop.
Then they spend the money.
Much cheaper. How much is a stop sign?
Yeah.
Look both ways.
Country love.
Stop sign.
Could you, if we have a vision of what something is going to look like, how much power do you have to say, if we want this to look like a small Midwestern town, I'm just thinking aloud here, could you say, could you make your buildings brick or brick facade or some, could you, could you go down that road or is that a road we don't want to go down as being restrictive? I mean, because we have this master idea, but I mean, it, it would be half done, I guess, if we had like very modern architecture, kind of like the architecture on Estrella, where they have the seventies brick going on there, kind of like the Ace Hardware, that kind of thing. And I, I don't think that'd like fit with the old farmhouse houses and those type of things. How much power do you have as planning zoning board to say, you know, we'd rather have this look?
Well, you know, there are, again, that's part of, you know, there's some state legislation out there that does limit our authority that we can't just go out nowadays and say, okay, everyone's going to do this now and like provide more regulation. So I think if we went out and tried to say, you have to do brick, we might have some But I think that's, again, that's maybe a discussion with the developers and, and again, I don't think it has to be everybody. You know what I mean? It's like, all we need is to get a couple people excited and to kind of start it. Because again, if you go out to this area and Gilbert we're talking about, where Agrotopia, not every subdivision follows it, but it's still really awesome.
It's actually a really very small area in the grand scheme of things.
Right.
It's like a corner and that's about it.
It would be like this.
You're not talking.
Okay.
But that's exactly the kind of conversation I would like us to start proactively having like with home builders and commercial developers of, if we just come to you early and say, we'd prefer you to do this rather than this, can you do it?
Because if it's a simple thing.
Is it that we're coming to you late? You know what I mean? Or what does it take? Is, is brick really more expensive than stucco or what would you, you know, again, just start talking to them about, well, what does it take? Or how could you achieve the same goal with whatever materials you'd want to do, you know?
Have you ever done that? Or are you thinking about doing that, having a roundtable discussion with the developers and just throw it out on the table and say, we're looking to bring people into Goodyear. This is our concept that we're thinking about. We want to use our existing natural habitat and that's farming, it's, you know, all the things that we have in the planning 2025 book. And, you know, if you lay it down on the table and just say, what do you think?
That's what this charrette would be. That's what we would hope. And even leading up to the charrette, we want to reach out, you know, there's some people in the development community that we work with very closely and we're always focused on individual projects we're working on. We never take the time to just, hey, can we just take you out to some coffee and just talk to you about this stuff? And what do you think? And how should we approach the development community about this?
I think they'd love it.
You know, so we, you know, we want to get some advice from some of those people and then try it.
You know, they want to be successful too, right? They'll forget this, you know? So they're, you know, it's kind of like Napa Valley, you know, it's like, how does it all just look beautiful and come together, you know? One winery after the other after the other? Because one or two, and then they know the feel and look and they want to be successful and they, they stay within that keeping. So I don't think it's as difficult a job to convince them to, you know, to drink the Kool-Aid and, you know, continue on the, the, the theme as, as it is. And I think they want to be successful working together, so. I think once the ball gets rolling, I think it'll kind of, just kind of take its own, you know, coordination and, and the design will just kind of organically come, you know, with the way, yeah, exactly.
It's funny because we've already kind of just tentatively mentioned something to like one developer group and they're already like, okay, city, what are you doing to us?
I think that's the biggest hurdle you're going to have.
No, 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 it's not, it's not what we mean. You know, and they're just like, what, where are you going? You know, they don't, they don't believe that. No, no, we just want to talk and...
The difference is with the Verados and the New, those communities are master planned by one particular person, like private company versus us saying, hey, would you mind doing something like this? And a whoa, like commitment issue type thing with...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I think also because when Goodyear was so new, we did have some, the first big developers in there were so excited because there was so much land and like, let's do this cool concept and like Estrella does that, Palm Valley does that and Canyon Trails, Wildflower and all that. And since these guys have been sitting out there for so long, they're just kind of burnt out and ready to sell it. And that's kind of what we've seen as we've had some meetings with, regarding the development agreements, regarding PED amendments, regarding all the plating, is they're kind of just burnt out and want to, all right, whatever it takes, we need to sell it. So as you mentioned, we really want to get them excited about this and hopefully having these conversations and starting the charrette and all that really kind of like, okay, let's do this and then I can sell it and make a profit and...
Well, and I think, you know, I think they're actually getting beat up, you know, financing has changed so much.
Yeah.
That, you know, it used to be that a home builder might buy, you know, 100 acres and develop it, where now they're trying to, you know, they're only going to buy 50 lots at a time. So these developers are having a hard time, you know, and then they're concerned because it's like if I give, trying to sell something to a home builder and I have this whole list of regulations, it's going to scare them off. And so, again, it's trying to partner with them because we both want the same end, you know?
You can imagine someone with a small development in mind not wanting to be the first one to just throw up some houses there when there's nothing else around it. So I would, I would think that they would want to know that you're trying to make a destination.
It's about just saying, can we look at the elevations that you would use in these particular places as opposed to, can we just look at those? Can we maybe try that particular elevation as opposed to these? Adobe versus, not, not Adobe, but we want more of the farmhouse look, but, but, I mean, that's a simple conversation.
These, these are some pictures from La Sprisus. I don't know if everyone's been out there. I hadn't. Is this the La Sprisus? No, never mind, sorry. The last one was. Oops.
Where's this?
So this is La Sprisus. And if you get a chance to get out there, it kind of does already have this theme and it, it helped us draw from that. There are some white fences out there, the, the trellises were out there. And it's, it's kind of already happened with La Sprisus and that hopefully will help set the stage too.
I have not been to La Sprisus yet.
Yeah.
I'm not driven through it anyway.
Don't you have a picture of the trellis?
Did I?
Somewhere? Or maybe that was a printout.
No, you, well, you passed one. There was one.
There was one previously, yeah. Keep going.
I like that oyster, whatever that was.
This one?
That's pretty cool.
That is cool.
Yeah, I mean, so to that point, you know, it's like, you can imagine that coming off the interstate and, you know, it's the arbors or Wego or whatever it is that the, the brand name of West Goodyear ends up being, you know, welcome, it's, it's, we're in this area and there's, at the intersections where Steve and Alex and Katie were talking, you know, maybe there's some citrus trees. And we're not talking about an alley of them going all the way down because of the water usage and the maintenance and things of that nature, but strategically placed brand identity, hey, I'm somewhere different. Kind of like Litchfield Road and the palm trees. I mean, you know you're somewhere different because of it. So it's about branding that area and do that successfully with our partners, it makes them more successful, which I heard you all say is what they want. And it's oft, and it's more about than just the architecture of the houses because we have to be careful in how we present that to the developers because they want to, to be appealing to the widest pool of potential customers as possible. So it's about trying to just influence the, the theme initially in terms of reinforcing that image of citrus trees and farming and agricultural. And there's lots of things the city can do within its control of the right of way, but we can't afford to do it all that we want to, so we need their support and effort, which gets back to balancing out the improvement costs and the, the number of improvements, like Katie said, with the sidewalk going to a DG trail or, or bridal trail or what have you, and then asking them to say, well, you know, if you save $400,000 on this, how about a little investment as a, as a garden shed in the middle of your neighborhood as opposed to a totlot or, you know, you know, so, you know what I mean? It's about repurposing.
It's just like a big barn as like the community hall. You know how they had the, you know, too much Walmart, you know, but, you know? Yeah, yeah, the, you know, the community hall and then they have the dances and the, you know, the country band and the hay bales outside and, you know, they can have community meetings and, you know, stuff like that. And that could be truly a draw as a community hall. You know how they used to use those?
Katie and I actually attended a, a development breakfast with some master planned, master community developers. And they had, they're saying it's very difficult and they got to get amenities in to actually be a successful, or master planned community from the get-go. Oh, you saw that too. And they said the agrahood theme that, and creating like a barn is just so much cheaper than doing kind of like big pools and, and those kind of themes. So it's just like, let's do this, let's offer these, these options.
And we, this is a little off topic, but I just love this quote, but someone said they're, they're not building the traditional 40,000 square foot, you know, community center kind of like Pebble Creek has that's gorgeous anymore. They're, they're creating areas where people can be antisocial in a social setting. So I just want to go and text around other people.
Right, it's true.
It's true.
Yeah.
It's absolutely true, yep. And we should be able to ride our bikes there.
Yes, I want to ride my bike there, have the ice cream without killing, you know, taking my life in my hands.
Interesting. That was a very interesting master plan. And I lived in a master planned community Rouse Company in Columbia, Maryland, so, you know, you kind of, and it's a, you know, these themes are a draw for young families as well as older because you have that nice combination of hometown, but then you've got all the, all the things you need from farm stands to big box, you know? It's, it's got everything.
I could talk about this all night. Seems like you guys can too. But I think we have some really great input from you guys and we're, we're still kind of working out the kinks on the charrette and we hope to get you all invited and involved in some, some meetings through that. So hopefully look out for that. Next month, like Christopher said, we will be talking about another area and that'll be Karen and Joe about the central Goodyear.
City center area, so that's going to get more into the economic development business kind of side of things. We're really focused more on residential.
Yeah, but until then, thank you guys for this dialogue. Like, this is my favorite thing to talk about and I've been waiting to talk to you guys about it. Me and Steve and Katie and all of us just talk about it all day. And so, thank you guys for, especially staying here.
That city hall now, that barn, that...
Thank you for having the vision.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And I think based on the discussion that we've had to Chris and to staff, I think that I would encourage more of it looking, because we have a huge city and we have a lot of opportunity moving south down to, towards Mobile. So more, more proactive, progressive type things I think is good for this city.
Yeah, the tiny home people.
Thinking outside the box.
The tiny home people.
Yeah.
Thinking outside the box and, and, and push us and don't be afraid to push council either.[1749.66]